All the speakers in order with a question of allegiance.
I am glad to be here today in the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord Jesus Christ.
Holly, here. Holly, here. Kulos.
Here.
Kulos, here. Viera.
Here.
Viera, here. Bolado.
Here.
Bolado, here. Rita.
Here.
Rita, here. Donahue. Donahue, absent. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Ossling.
Here.
Ossling, here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here. Frosto.
Here.
Frosto, here. Thompson. Thompson, absent. Johansson.
Here.
Johansson, here. Twelve eyes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed, I want everybody to check their phones. Put it on loop for office, please, out of courtesy to everyone here. Thank you. Presentation of turn of proceedings. I need a motion through the City Council minutes for the date of March twenty-second, 2016. I have a motion by Alderman Kulos, second by Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roll call.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado, hi. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi. Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi. Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi. Johansson.
Hi.
Johansson, hi. Twelve eyes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Council?
You are all welcome to this evening's meeting. You are politely reminded that the purpose of the meeting is for deliberation of the City Council and the mayor regarding city governance and business. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor, approach the podium, announce your name and address. Each further advice comments may be limited to three minutes or forwarded to the appropriate city personnel for follow-up.
Thank you very much. Anyone?
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
City council. Allen Stevo, 23, 24, Union, Blue Island. I just have a few questions this evening. City Attorney Rains, can you give us a follow-up, please, on your work being done on the codification book, on how you've changed ordinances?
Anything else, Mr. Stevo? As you know, the Judiciary Committee's been working that diligently and they continue working on that, updating the votes. Next.
So you're s- the city attorney won't answer the simple question?
Next, sir.
Won't answer it?
Next.
Mayor, can you make sure that there's no response or your response in the general proceedings, so people can follow what you're accomplishing here? Next, I'm going to Alderman Frosto, the chairman of the Judiciary Committee. Alderman Frosto, can you please explain to the city of Blue Island how you've changed the codification book and how you've rewritten ordinances?
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just a quick answer to your questions, Mr. Stevo. As you know, we're currently reviewing the whole codification book through my committee that I chair, along with the rest of the committee members. Review this by title, chapter by chapter. We do several revisions and the process is, once we come to an agreement that we like what we see, we bring it to the full council for approval, to update the current code.
Will you have a public hearing to explain the complete codification changes?
Well, I have a public hearing. We have Judiciary Committee every month. We have City Council meetings approving these updates.
Have you changed the ordinance referring to the police chief? Have you changed that ordinance?
Um, I would have to review that. You know, I can't. We're- there's a lot- there's many chapters and many sections that we're reviewing, so.
I'll retract that. I want to be very fair to you, Alderman Frosto. I want to be very fair to you and the rest of the council. I'll refer my question to the city attorney. Has the ordinance been changed?
Mr. Stevo, is that position still available? It's still vacant. It's remained vacant. Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't. I've asked if she has changed the ordinance that we will have as a city police chief.
It's still there.
Yeah, but has- that she hasn't changed it?
No.
But she can't comment on that?
No.
Going to a council table. The Del- Dela Law Group, thirteen thousand, sixty-three dollars. Can you tell us what that's for?
I don't know what it is. I don't have it on record.
You don't have a handle on that? Uh, I'd like to refer a question to the chairman of Finance.
Right off again?
Mr. Viera, could you tell us what that's for?
Uh, those are legal fees.
Uh, do you know for what- what lawsuit?
Uh, no. Matt, do you have that information? I don't have it in front of me, to be honest.
We can get it for you, Mr. Stevo. There's multiple. There's not just one single. Most of it is contract negotiations.
Thank you, man. The Illinois-
Contract negotiations? Thanks.
Contract negotiations?
Yeah, the unions.
The Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, twenty-six thousand. Do you happen to know what that's for?
Anything else, Mr. Stevo?
Alderman, Chairina?
Time's on, Mr. Stevo. Anything else?
What was that again?
Yeah, thank you very much. The Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, twenty-six thousand, March eleventh.
You know what? I don't have that information. I'll have to get back to what they have.
Thank you. And Michael Casper, there's eight thousand, two eighty-seven. That's what he charged the city for his legal work?
Yes.
And that's final?
For the lawsuit that was brought in?
Yes.
That's final?
For the court.
Uh, David Hernandez and his attorney, fifty-eight thousand. Could you tell us what that's about?
Senator.
Uh, who did- who was allowed there?
It's a case before this administration.
Oh, what- what happened?
Mr. Stevo, please hear. We don't have to be discussing cases.
Well, it's public information, man. That- it's public information that the public has a right to.
Anything else?
Inshaun Culbers in LOP. Why did we pay down thirty-one thousand?
Anything else, Mr. Stevo?
Any comment, mayor?
No, sir.
Do you have a handle on that, mayor?
Yes, sir.
Tabit and DeVito, Rothstein, four thousand, two fifty.
Anything else, Mr. Stevo?
Uh, why- yeah, I was asked- I was asked to ask this question to Alderman Rita. Why would she abstain from voting?
Anything else, Mr. Stevo?
As far as the recital goes.
Because it had to do with my dad.
Oh, I see. And, uh, does Alderman Slattery abstain also?
Mr. Stevo?
What's that?
There's nothing to do with me that much.
No, but the payroll, every- every paper does, right? The payroll?
Why?
I mean, I'm trying to figure this out now. Alderman Rita abstains, but Alderman Slattery doesn't abstain.
Why would I abstain?
Anything else, Mr. Stevo?
Well, I don't- because your husband was divorced.
Mr. Stevo?
Those other members of council members.
Well, I just thought maybe you would abstain from voting.
Thank you, Mr. Stevo.
Uh, does anyone have any questions for me? Alderman Frosto, when will your next Judiciary meeting be?
Our next meeting is this Thursday, April fourteenth, at seven PM.
Uh, as you announced, that your last meeting was also at seven PM, but it was at six-thirty. So is this one going to be changed at six-thirty?
We had a change due to the election, so we changed the date time. It was posted with proper noise.
Time's up.
So tomorrow will be seven o'clock?
Thursday, seven o'clock.
Thursday, seven o'clock, thank you. Please, 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 officer, please.
Anyone else?
I pay your salary.
Let me make this comment. Uh, there was an issue, there was a situation early Sunday morning regarding a business by the name of Premium One Twenty-Seven. Since there's going to be litigation, a hearing this coming Monday, discussion's going to be very brief. It's going to be prosecuted here this coming Monday at two PM. Public is welcome. Again, it is a hearing, almost like a trial, with witnesses selected by the city attorney who will be representing the city regarding the business of liquor license. From my understanding, there's also the Committee of redevelopment is looking into, actually, the actual business license also. As of right now, the license, the liquor license has been suspended. It's suspended immediately. And the hearings for suspension and revocation of that license, of that liquor license, which the hearing will start on this coming Monday at two PM here in the East Adams. Report of city officials, presentation, resolutions. Let me have the honor, and hopefully I pronounce your name correctly. Violet Kuda Kogut?
That's you.
Mine's coming up?
Kogut.
Coming up. We're going to turn around. And, yeah, stay right there. And again, it is an honor.
Well, it's a pleasure for me, too.
What an honor. One hundred years old. And I have a proclamation resolution. I have a resolution honoring this young lady right here. And it reads as follows. And it's on behalf of your city, the city where you were born in, city of Blue Island.
Yes, and I lived here almost all my life, except I had eight years in Harvey and I had three years in Rosewood.
You're still a Blue Islander. Let me read it as follows. Are we ready, City Council?
Yes.
A resolution honoring Violet Kuda Kogut on the celebration of her one-hundredth birthday. And it reads as follows. Whereas it is a custom of this administrative body to honor those distinguished individuals whose life, work, and civic endeavor served to enhance the quality of life in their communities. And whereas attentive to such concern and in full accord with its long-attaining traditions, this administrative body is justly proud to celebrate the one-hundredth birthday of Violet Kogut and to pay tribute to her many accomplishments and contributions to her community. And whereas, in nineteen sixteen, Violet was born in the city of Blue Island on Canal Street and lived her whole life in the city of Blue Island and for over sixty-five years in her home on Oak Street. And whereas Violet Kuda Kogut married the late Walter Kogut in nineteen thirty-four and has three children, James, Joyce, and the late Paul Kogut. And whereas Violet has six grandchildren, ten great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren. And whereas, you know, whereas while a homemaker, she worked three years for Mount Calco and three years for the U.S. Railway. Whereas Violet was a member of the Catholic Daughters of America, Saint Benedict's Altar and Rosary Society, Saint Benedict's Women's Club, Saint Benedict's Church, and a member to Mother of Sorrows. Whereas she was hostess of Saint Benedict's Letneth Fish Fry, as well as teaching CCD classes at Saint Benedict's for over twenty-five years. Whereas longevity to her faith, her work, and helping others -and you're going to hear this- she won the Catholic Woman of the Year Award. And whereas Violet Kogut's admirable record earns her the recognition and respectful tribute of this administrative body and its citizens of the city of Blue Island.
Thank you.
Now therefore, be it resolved by me as the mayor of the city of Blue Island, the City Council of the city of Blue Island, the County of Cook, the state of Illinois, do hereby congratulate and offer our most sincere and heartfelt congratulations to Violet Kogut on the celebration of her one-hundredth birthday passed this twelfth day of April 2016. Let's hear a big one. I'm going to add something special to the City Council. Come down here and take a picture alongside of me, please.
Sing happy birthday.
And we should sing happy birthday, right? And we'll sing happy birthday up here. Stay right there. Stay right there. Stay along the back.
How far back do you want us?
Uh, you got to go up front.
Two, three. Now we're going to sing all- all of us are going to sing happy birthday. Ready? On the count of three. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Violet. Happy birthday to you.
Would you like to- yes, and many, many more. It's your time to- the spotlight.
Thank you, everybody. This is the greatest pleasure. I never expected this. So I am very, very proud. Thank you for your everything.
My pleasure. Again, what an honor. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
This is really, really a pleasure.
It's an honor to be here.
Thank you.
Let me walk you over.
Thank you.
Mayor, need a motion?
Need a motion for the resolution. Alderman Johansson, second by Alderman Ossling. All in favor, or do we want to go roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations again to Violet. If I may call her Violet. Officer, point you coming up. And you have the next- we have a podium for the next one in a minute. For a second. Go ahead.
Thank you, mayor, City Council members. I just wanted to step up in light of the fact that it is National Telecommunicators Week, and I wanted to, uh, to honor them and, and just put it out there that our telecommunicators do a really important job. They're behind the walls and behind the windows. And while our first responders a lot of times get recognized when big things happen and big arrests are made, or when the fire department makes a big save, in the background, a lot of times, are the telecommunicators that often don't get recognized. But the telecommunicators, just like our first responders, work twenty-four-seven. They work holidays. They work weekends. And a lot of times, they're under similar stress levels that our first responders are under, as they take the initial calls and they take multiple calls from people during these incidents. So I just wanted to, to honor our, our nine-one-one dispatchers and point out what an important job they do. And if anybody comes across any of them or gets the chance during this National Telecommunicators Week, I encourage you to extend your thanks and tell them what a good job you do. I know the mayor has something to say at this point.
Want to call two of the members, please?
Yes, we have two of our telecommunicators here. Step on up. We have our, we have our supervisor, Jim McGeever, and then telecommunicator Delgado.
How are you?
Thank you, sir. How are you?
They're here refereeing the entire center. We've got several working right now that can't come out.
So for the youth who are here from Eisenhower, we're now everybody else, behind that window, through that wall, is our nine-one-one center. So you have approximately- right now, how many are working in there right now?
Right now, a total of five.
Five. And they still the communities right now of Malothean, Blue Island, Posen, correct?
That's right.
At one time, we had Cal Park.
And all the fire departments.
And all the fire departments, correct. Proclamation, National Telecommunicator Week. Whereas in nineteen ninety-one congressional resolution named the second full week in April of every year, National Telecommunicator Week. And whereas emergencies can occur at any time or any place and require the assistance of police, fire, or emergency medical services. Whereas nine-one-one is the hotline for help for people in emergency situations. And a nine-one-one call taker's voice is a first assurance that help is on the way. And whereas nine-one-one professionals regularly meet the challenges of extremely stressful situations with calmness and efficiency. And whereas when the emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of these emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and assurance of information obtained from citizens who telephone the nine-one-one communication center. And whereas the public safety dispatchers are the heart of public safety, providing assistance before any other emergency services arrive on the scene. Whereas public safety dispatchers are a vital link for emergency responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of injuries and illnesses on a daily basis. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her duties, daily duties. Now therefore, I, Mayor Domingo F. Vargas of the city of Blue Island, declare the week of April the tenth through April the sixteenth, 2016, to be National Telecommunicator Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our region's citizens and emergency responders safe, dated this twelfth day of April 2016. Signed, Domingo F. Vargas, Mayor of the city of Blue Island. Congratulations, and well respected, and what an honor. Say something, a few words, please?
I'll take two seconds. I just want to thank, um, everybody in the room, the administration, mayor, police department, fire department, for all your confidence, your attendance. We try to do the best we can.
Thank you. Any bids, City Court?
No bids.
City Court's business.
Yes, I have five items this evening, Your Honor. Need a motion to approve a request from Lincoln Elementary School to have their fourth annual walkathon on April twenty-ninth from nine-thirty AM to approximately eleven AM. It will be closing six side streets from Redwood and Canal.
Motion by Alderman Viera, second by Alderman Bolado. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado, hi. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi. Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi. Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi. Johansson.
Hi.
Johansson, hi. Twelve eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, we have a need a motion to approve a request from Friends of the Chicago River to access their property at Ann Street along the North Bank of the Calisag Channel for their annual Chicago River Day cleanup event on May fourteenth, 2016.
The motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Kulos. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado, hi. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi. Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi. Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi. Johansson.
Hi.
Johansson, hi. Twelve eyes, your honor.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, next we need a motion to approve a request from District One thirty Public Schools to have their Fit for Life initiative, which is a one- and two-mile walk-run on Thursday, May nineteenth, from nine fifteen AM to approximately twelve-thirty PM.
Alderman Johnson, motion. Second by Alderman Johansson. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado, hi. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi. Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi. Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi. Johansson.
Hi.
Johansson, hi. Twelve eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, need a motion to approve a request from the Muscat District Association to grant the Blue Island firefighters to hold a field of boot tag day on May twentieth, June twenty-fourth, and July twenty-ninth of the intersection one hundred and twenty-seven in Kenzie, nineteen Higbee Street, and Vermont West Street.
Got a motion by Alderman Slattery, second by Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado, hi. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi. Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi. Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi. Johansson.
Hi.
Johansson, hi. Twelve eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
Lastly, need a motion to approve a request from St. Tana's Parish to hold its hundred-and-seventh annual feast and carnival starting on Wednesday, August third through Sunday, August seventh, 2016. Feastful- feast day mass will start at ten AM on Sunday, August seventh.
Motion by Alderman Bolado, Alderman Rita. Any questions?
Let me make one comment. This is the first year in my recollection that the feast day of Sunday falls on the actual feast day of San Donato. So they're planning to do a little extra, providing the carnival out to the mass and stuff, and any of the council members of the public, and they've been to the feast day procession. It's something that's carried over from the old world where they carry the saints to the neighborhood. And there's nowhere left in the city of Chicago that still actually does it in the same neighborhood that they've done it for over a hundred years. So I encourage, uh, this is a good year to come check it out if the Cardinals are sacred mass. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, roll call.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado, hi. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi. Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi. Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi. Johansson.
Hi.
Johansson, hi. Twelve eyes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Any else? City Attorney?
Yes, your honor. While the augur is received, the Mass is taking the Mass Day in the March thirty-first, 2016, the security benefit of the local authority of the Blue Island is available to the back of the multifaire.
Need a motion?
Yes.
I have a motion by Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Bolado. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado, hi. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Frosto.
Hi.
Frosto, hi. Johansson.
Hi.
Johansson, hi. Eleven eyes and one note, Your Honor.
Thank you. City Attorney? Anything else? City Attorney, business?
Yes, I have a resolution authorize you to have a settlement agreement related to certain litigation as discussed in both section previously and as contained in our council package.
Need a motion? Motion by Alderman Ossling, second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Bolado.
Hi.
Bolado, hi. Rita.
Hi.
does it in the same neighborhood that they've done it for over 100 years. I encourage, this is a good year to come check it out if the Cardinals are saving us. Thank you.
Any questions? Roll call.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Hussling.
Aye.
Hussling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The accounts payable for March 28th, 2016, which includes $107,668.53 for garbage, $132,284 for the second ambulance, as well as $157,734 for two small public works trucks, which will be 100% reimbursed from the IFA bond, as well as $23,871.26 for salt, which will be reimbursed through MFT. A motion to authorize payment made by Alderman Fried Bellato, second by Alderman Vieira, a voice vote all in favor to authorize the payment of accounts payable in the amount of $647,016.56. Motion carried. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
A motion, we have a Second Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Hussling.
Aye.
Hussling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Hussling.
Aye.
Hussling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Accounts payable for April 8th, 2016, motion taken. The IFA bond golf course project. The committee as a whole agreed not to increase the IFA bond for the golf course clubhouse. Motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:16 p.m. made by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Hussling, a voice vote all in favor, motion carried. The next finance committee will be held on Tuesday, April 19th, at 7:15 p.m. after the scheduled public hearing in the East Annex of City Hall, Blue Island, Illinois. Reminder that the finance committee has been changed due to twice a month on the first and third Tuesday of the month at 6:30.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Yes, Your Honor. Last meeting was held on March 8th. Called to order at 6:00 p.m. Present were Director John Rita, Chief James Klinker, Commander Kevin Sisk, Alderman James Johansson, Alderman George Pulos, and myself. Absent were Deputy Chief Michael Cornell, Supervisor Jim McGeever, Alderman Nancy Thompson, and Alderman Dexter Johnson. The previous minutes were, there was a motion to approve by Alderman Johansson, second by Alderman Pulos. All in favor, motion carried. There were no citizens' concerns. The South Suburban Mayors and Managers gave a presentation. Todd Praley with the Respiratory Health Association did a presentation on a grant from the CDC for partnerships on community health. These grants are available to landlords with smoke-free buildings or wish to transform their buildings into smoke-free housing. Landlords who are interested should contact Ken Morris at South Suburban Mayors and Managers. Under the Fire Department, Fire Department had 272 calls in February, 173 were EMS calls. 150 patients were treated, 131 patients were transported, and 43 patients refused transport. Fire Department responded to 17 general fire alarms and 24 minor fire alarms. They responded to 37 auto aid calls. They had 19 calls to man the station. They received two mutual aid response calls. Average response time was 5.6 minutes. Medical reimbursement services for February was $41,559.54. False fire alarm fees collected in February were $880. During the month of February, the Fire Department was called out on one structured fire, one electrical fire, one auto aid fire in Cal Park, and they delivered one baby. Under general, cruise attendant ethics and diversity training, the second new ambulance was received on Thursday, March 17th, and Chief Klinker applied to invisible fence for animal oxygen masks. Under fire prevention, fire prevention inspectors inspected three fire alarm systems, one sprinkler system, 34 annual inspections, three license inspections, and no plan reviews during the month of February. The training division completed 502 hours of training for the month of February, and then we get no news on the grants that we've applied for. Under the Police Department, the Police Department answered 2,111 calls, including 566 business premise checks, 108 were liquor establishment checks. Under stats and cases of interest, there was 114 alarm calls, all unfounded, one armed robbery, six residential burglaries, two were unfounded, 10 shots fired, five unfounded, 81 domestic disputes, and 377 traffic stops. Total money collected for the month of February was $36,958.89. The Police Department patrolled 18,888 miles. Under calls of interest, on February 12th, officers responded to Harry's Long Bar for a fight in progress. Upon arrival, officers began to separate the parties. One of the patrons had a pistol on his side. Officers learned that the pistol was stolen out of Gary, Indiana. The offender was charged with possession of a stolen weapon and possession of drugs. Under liquor salesman calls, there was one disturbance call, one subject removal call, and three fight calls during the month of February. Under training, the Police Department and several city employees went through ethics and diversity training. Under community policing, the Community Policing Unit was requested by Plows to assist with a senior at the 12500 block of Caribou. The senior was identified as being at risk by a third party alleging neglect. The incident is under investigation. The Community Policing Unit updated juvenile arrest files to be in compliance with state law. The Community Policing Unit also assisted the building department with an aggressive campaign to enforce all applicable building violations. They were working in the second ward. Under miscellaneous, officers will continue to check all the vacant properties in March, and background investigations for new hires began. Under the 911 Center, in February, the 911 Center answered a total of 5,544 calls. Several dispatchers were currently in training, and Commander Sisk will be doing a consultation on gasport parking. All negotiations on the FOP contract for the 911 Center began. Under monthly health and sanitation, in the month of February, 24 health and sanitation inspections were done. All businesses were in compliance. Licensing in the city is up to date, and under Alderman's concerns, Alderman Johansson expressed his concerns about the closing of the Brennan Bottle Store, which is now reopened. Meeting was adjourned at 6:41. Our next regular meeting will be May 10th at 6:00 p.m. in the East Annex.
Thank you. Our Chief, if you can assist me on the lights outside of the firehouse. Could you maybe address the public and give a little information as to who did the work?
Sure. Can I do it from right here? If I'm loud enough? When you leave tonight, take a look at the firehouse. There's a green and red light on either side of the door. Don't ask me the history of that. I know it, but it slips my mind. Anyway, the glass were broken in a couple of them. The lights weren't working. Couple of the guys took them down, refurbished them. They took all the black paint that was on them off. They've got them back to their original condition. They're copper. They put new glass into them, new green and red glass, and the light bulb, so they'll shine green and red. They're also going to wait a little while till they kind of discolor, and then you're going to clear coat them so they don't turn green like copper does. So that's where we're at. So there was a couple of the guys, this couple of probationary guys said, can we do it? I said, yeah, go for it. So they rewired the electric and everything, so they look nice.
We got some other stuff for them.
Okay, yeah, let me know. They're more than happy to do anything I ask them to do, so.
The significance of the red and the green? Red is starboard.
Right. Yeah, but there's a story with the Fire Department and horses and things too.
Oh, that's a Canadian, you know.
It does, exactly. Starboard and port. I'll get back to you on that one.
Thank them on behalf of the city. It looks great, beautiful. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Municipal Services Committee? Any report? Nothing? Go ahead.
I'm not on Municipal Services, but whoever is on, I think you should mention about the street starting pavement this week.
Who else is on Municipal Services?
Who's on the committee? So we got Cochran.
Bertzall.
Bertzall, Lewis, and then eventually they're going to do 123rd Place by Paul Revere. So major projects, construction, dust, inconvenience, but we'll take it.
I believe it starts this Thursday, right?
Cochran, Bertzall, Lewis starts this Thursday until May 20th. We'll be sending out a code red flyers starting tomorrow, 123rd Place, we expect to do this summer. We don't have an exact date just yet.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. The committee did meet Wednesday, March 23rd at 6:30.